Do me a favor, try plugging this in over there. This is not functioning or something.
I'm sorry.
Plug it in.
Plug it in.
Open up.
I don't see this plug's up. Make it work.
It's not plugged in down below.
I don't know, it's plugged into these things down here. Let's try it again. Take a minute, keep shutting it off, tell me no power.
We're in business.
Well, maybe not.
Okay.
Okay, you need to repeat anything?
No, just go, I got everything down here.
Okay. And I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 7th, 2018. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on those?
One question.
Okay.
On item five, number C. The property has been suspended due to withdrawal of state funding. Is it really withdrawn or just on hold?
I guess you could say it either way, but it's on hold, we're hoping...
Because withdrawal would mean that they're removing it typically, so, but I don't think they're doing it, just on hold.
It's on hold for the moment.
Change withdrawal to hold?
Yeah. And they seem to be getting their tolls as they want. And all of a sudden, they're talking about the work up in Middletown on Route 9 again, so perhaps things are starting to move. We'll see what happens. Okay. Anything else? All in favor with the amendment is...
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there we go. Selectmen's report, couple of things, we were...
Any correspondence?
And we have no correspondence, okay. Couple of things, we were asked about the testing for mold and mildew in this building, which is scheduled. Fussin' O'Neill's going to be doing it. And they've indicated that with the painting, we're sanding in the gym right now, and they're still painting underway. And they feel that it's best to wait until that's complete, that the results will be far less than perfect otherwise. And it's scheduled right now for mid-April. And there was a question also about the village property, whether or not we'd be having public hearings. And yes, we will be having them, there's great deal of interest, but we're in process of getting an RFP together and coming to terms with that. And before anything is decided or moved terribly far forward, we will have public hearings. And at this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Bob Morse. And he's gonna make a report to us on the transfer station committee.
Might I be able to sit up there?
Absolutely. Wherever you look comfortable.
You can sit here if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll sit here. So, came here, thank you very much for coming and listening to our report today. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and review my interim report to you. Wrote this report a couple of weeks ago, after a number of meetings with our group. So, I'm gonna read it as it is, and I think that if you have any questions, thank you for coming. Selectmen, per the terms of the resolution dated August 16th, 1917, actually, 2017, the purpose of this document is to report back to you the findings of the committee after meeting over the last 60 days. You selected five regular members and two alternate members. Shortly after our first meeting on January 18th, one of the regular meetings resigned from the committee. You signed one of the alternates to take his place, it's a regular matter. Meeting, we've been meeting twice per month at town facilities. There've also been visits to Hattam, Essex, Portland, and the East Hattam Transfer Station. A study was conducted of all transfer stations within Middlesex County. Table was created that compared all transfer stations by population, whether carters were permitted, whether there was mandatory garbage pickup, permit fees, bag fees, and other fees. Copy of the same is included and is part of this document. Also attached are copies of the budget versus actual expenditures for transfer stations in East Hattam, Essex, and Portland. They are also part of this document. These documents, along with the deep announced goal of achieving 60% recycling by 2024, played a significant role during our deliberations, conclusions, and recommendations. See Public Act 14-94. We currently recycle less than 25% of our total waste, well below what is possible. It's my belief that eventually this deep goal will eventually become a requirement. Recently, the first selectman informed me that the finance committee expected to receive revenue from the operations of the transfer station. While this is a reasonable request and is standard throughout most of Connecticut, raising revenue through a fee-based sticker system does nothing to increase recycling, nor move towards the public policy goal of 60% recycling by 2024. Fundamental focus of the committee thus has been to meet the new revenue requirement in a way that motivates residents to increase recycling, while at the same time reducing the total tax burden our residents pay for the use of the transfer station. To do so will require the town to create a new policy that funds the transfer station in a different way. Residents who use the transfer station will no longer exclusively pay for the transfer station through an ever-increasing mill rate. They will now be empowered to limit and reduce their costs by increasing their recycling. They pay when they create non-recyclables and save by paying nothing when they recycle. This has been done in Portland, and the savings have been quite dramatic for their residents. Using Portland's budget for 2018, residents will pay $164,835 to operate their transfer station through their taxes. $60,500 for town-required garbage bags, and $27,000 for use permits. This total is $252,335. Dividing the total by the residents, by their 9,500 populations, equals a cost per resident of $26.56 per resident to operate the Portland dump. East Hattam's proposed budget for 2018 looks to be $615,673. Public Works budgeted $40,000 in revenue from all transfer station-related sources, leaving $575,673 to be paid by the tax-paying public. With 9,500 residents, the cost per taxpayer is $63.26. Why we pay $63.26 per person for our transfer station and Portland pays $26.50 per person should be alarming to all East Hattam taxpayers. The reason for the $363,000 cost different, the cost differentials are, the reasons are numerous. Under a town-based bag play program, the carters will no longer use the transfer station. This will reduce the total amount of all types of trash and eliminate the practice of accepting commercial trash. Commercial trash was not accepted by any of the transfer stations I surveyed. Jansky also indicated they are supportive of the bag plan, as they agree this program will result in an increase in their customer base. More than 50% of Portland's residents, according to the numbers, are approximately 25%. To provide the town with a comparison of a transfer station without a bag program, the committee visited the Essex transfer station. The station does not haul commercial haulers and uses a combination sticker/punch card system to use the facilities. Yearly stickers cost $125, or an optional punch card may be purchased for $25 covering 10 residents-supplied bags for non-recyclables. There are discounts for seniors. Essex's actual yearly budget 2016, 2017 was $252,225. Direct revenues associated with the operation of the transfer station were $122,070. The net cost to operate the transfer station was thus $130,155. Dividing this cost by the number of residents in Essex, which is 6,700, yields a cost per resident of $19.26. This cost was the lowest of the three transfer stations measured, however, it was also noted that it was the smallest in size and population during the visit, through conversations with the managing committee member, the fellow that managed the Essex transfer station was a member of our committee. It appeared to the writers of this document that the facility was very tightly managed. I have no information on the percentage of residents that use commercial haulers, but I suspect it will be quite high. The manager believes further cost reduction is possible by hauling their own trash, as is mentioned below. As part of East Hattam's recommended cost-reduction program, we suggest the town purchase a truck and an appropriate number of containers. Portland hauls their own trash, should we do the same, our savings should be approximately $100,000 per year, considering lower MSW and recycling volumes and the reduction elimination of transportation expense. This investment has a payback period of two years. This should be an easy business decision. It will also be necessary to change the way residents access the upper level of the transfer station. We recommend a gate or other structure guiding all vehicles over the scale. In short, Owen goes to the upper level without speaking with a transfer station employee. This will ensure that the town is being paid per the fee schedule when bulk waste is being deposited. We are also recommending the use of a mandatory no-cost sticker system. Town clerk has the software that we may be able to use. In any case, the system must include proof of residency, as well as include the license plate of a car the resident is using. No sticker, no access. We suggest you provide a lengthy grace period, but eventually it must be enforced. Safety. During our last meeting, we approved a motion to recommend the back of the MSW compactor be closed to the public. It is dangerous to people to stand on the back of a pickup truck 25 feet above a compactor. I recently learned there was an accident years ago resulting in a broken back, and the town settling the eventual litigation. In spite of a recommended change and subsequent implementation of a plan to limit access to this area, the policy was reversed due to complaints from those wanting to maintain the status quo. I believe that continuous improvement is a far better philosophy, and in this case safer, than maintaining the status quo. I reviewed the Connecticut Municipal Leaders Manual, which clearly states, "The Board of Selectmen," open quotes, "makes policy decisions," close quotes. Should you wish to implement this recommendation, it is your exclusive right under the general statutes to do so. We also approved a motion to recommend an ordinance that created a review board, such that East Hattam is able to collect fines that would otherwise go to state government. It is best handled by a town attorney. As is clear, we have tackled most of the items laid out in your August 16th charging document. Remaining is the creation of a capital plan to upgrade the facility. One of our members has offered to take this on the task. I'm hopeful that we'll have something in about 30 days. The design will include some improvements that will address safety concerns. The last 10 years, past selectmen have formed two other committees to make recommendations concerning the East Hattam transfer station. None of the recommendations were implemented. The current committee is also making recommendations that, if accepted, will have a far-reaching impact in the terms of cost reduction and efficiency. Perhaps most importantly, we will take a leadership position with East Hattam's focus on recycling. We've taken an all-inclusive approach during our deliberations. As a result, we believe that our recommendations can be viewed as a win-win opportunity for those with different mindsets. The challenge going forward is that we share with the public the concept that there are times when change can benefit us all in many different ways. On behalf of the transfer station committee, I hope you implement the recommendations contained in this document. These changes will dramatically reduce and control the cost of the transfer station going forward. Taxpayer contribution to the facility will decrease. Our policies will be consistent with our neighboring towns, and East Hattam will become an environmental leader in solid waste management. From all of us, we thank the Board of Selectmen for the opportunity to serve you and the public. Since then, Mr. First Selectman, okay, I have completed the final report that has not been approved by the, by our committee. And the reason that I completed that is that I would suspect that the finance committee would be asking me questions relative to what type of cost savings would be available now, and then what would be later pending the approval of this program. And I'm prepared to answer those questions immediately.
You'll be in attendance today at the Board of Finance.
Well, he'll probably come running after me if I try to get out.
I suspect as much. Bob, you know, I've attended a few of your meetings when I could, and the intensity and the real effort that was being put forth and the inspiration that was coming from that committee are terrific. I want to thank you on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the town for what you've done. I know it hasn't been easy, and you've done it with the power here for us.
Oh, thank you very much.
Want me to ask questions?
Questions?
Yeah.
Bob, do you know how many tons the commercial haulers have been dumping annually?
Yeah, I do, okay. And that's gonna be all in the final report, however, the estimate that I was given by Beth and a number of other people is that the haulers bring in approximately 40% of all the trash in the dump, okay? That would be the non-recyclables as well as the recyclables. When we go over the detail of that, obviously you want to know what would be the contribution towards the savings by doing that. I'll be repeating these numbers later on, Mr. Chairman. Just bear with me a moment. Tipping fee reduction from haulers would be $86,291. Understand that there's actually a, we get a $5 credit per ton for recyclables, so that number includes both the increase and decrease.
So what part of this plan do you think can happen?
Well, certainly, my understanding, I've attended the last meeting when Beth presented, and my understanding that she put forth the recommendation to purchase a truck.
Right.
In the budget, it says that the allocated cost for transportation is $108,000. I see no reason that that can't go forward immediately, okay? And so as soon as you get the truck, what I think that you might be missing, and I would strongly suggest that you have a, she can have a brief meeting, as I would involve the personnel at the transfer station, as well as herself, come up with the number of containers that you'll require. One of the things, because I have spent time with the manager, Donald, and involved him, because I thought that was a wise thing to do. I think that you may be underestimating the number of containers that we required. I didn't spend personally a lot of time and try and figure that out, I thought that would be best figured out by them. Okay, but my understanding is that it's about, they're about $5,000 each. There is one issue out here that really needs to be addressed. When I was up there yesterday, I spoke to the young fellow, I believe his name is Keenan, a very wonderful young man. And he was talking to me, and he said, you know, if I take this piece of drywall and it rains, that might be, what, 20 pounds, and after a rain, it could be 100 pounds. There's a, I reviewed this with the people in Portland, and they either put a tarp over it, or in that case, they actually have some, they have some containers that have rolling tops, like a pool cover almost, it goes there. So I would suggest that for that use, for going into the bulky waste area, that be addressed that way. So there may be some additional dollars that you should really include in your budget to go and do that. So certainly, that would be a major contributor. I did not discount the cost in the final report, I didn't try to calculate the amount of fuel used and all that, but obviously, that's an important thing. And again, I would guess that depending upon how you purchase it, if you purchase it outright, you're probably planning the whole savings per year. If you go and do a lease, then you probably have to, because that probably be handled as an expense, and then you reduce it by that amount. So I'd strongly suggest that if you have capital monies available, I would just purchase them. The other area where there's a significant sales opportunity out here is in the bulky waste area. This area was particularly troubling to me. And again, Beth, your manager there took copious measurements and notes and numbers and actually provided me with the data, provided our committee with the data. And I should have gotten on top of this a little bit earlier, but oftentimes, the analysis of data tells a story. And I'll be, I don't know whether, I gave this to Emmett, I'll be providing a copy to the finance committee, but in there, we did an analysis of the gross, the number of bulky, the tonnage of bulky waste. And bulky waste is an area, would be construction debris and those types of things, it might be furniture, it might be things. So it gets brought both by residents. I went and I had a chair that I went up there and went over the thing, they measured me, they paid, I paid him 13 bucks to do it, and I was, it was done. When I review the data with you now, you'll probably, it sort of opens your eyes, okay? What we saw that's starting in probably 2013, we saw that the amount of tonnage was going up, and our revenue was going down. And that result of that is that we went from, in '13, tonnage of 689 tons, and it had a loss of 4,700, which is essentially break even. And speaking to the first selectman, that's sort of what he wanted to do, maybe we can make a couple bucks, but break even's okay, but not a loss. Our loss in 2017 is 52,339, so certainly, that's an opportunity for savings. This is an area, there's some policy issues out here that you have to address that's certainly outside my scope of. But I questioned a lot of people, and when you see numbers like this, you, it causes one some concern, you say, how could this happen? Because our profit, our loss went from 4,000 to 26,000 to 35,000 to 49,000, and now 52,000.
Those aren't included in our package, right? I don't see them, I didn't see them in our package.
That would be, if you want to make some more copies of this, you may, Evan has this. I have copies that I made for the finance committee, but there it illustrates what the problem is.
That'd be great, thank you.
Here, you might, if you could make a couple, I have, I think I have six copies for the finance committee, but I don't, I...
So...
Okay.
You have another meeting, Bob.
Yeah, I understand, I don't care.
So, even though, so we, you know, we're gonna set the policy, but we need the numbers behind it, right?
You've got the numbers.
Okay.
Okay, so, I can, I can, let me just give you my observations, so that perhaps you can direct your policy towards some of these observations.
Okay.
And some of these are accounting issues, okay? That's why I gave it to finance, because I figured they would be included in financial decisions. I believe strongly that, that cost should be allocated to whoever is creating the cost, okay? And that, and there's been a couple, because I asked them, I said, where's all this coming from? Where's this increase coming from, and then why aren't we collecting it? I said, well, you know, the town has had various types of projects and so forth, and they take construction debris and they bring it to the dump, and they don't have to pay for it, because they, that's who they are. The school, the school grows and brings things, from work that they do, have carters go, not necessarily a carter, but different type of, bring there and they put it in there. Quite frankly, I mean, it's an opinion, I wasn't charged to do this, but the school has their own budget. And construction debris from a school should stay within, that's a cost to operate the school, right? That simply should stay there, in my opinion. You know, so that's certainly an issue. So what do we do about those? Those are the two things where you, oh, not-for-profits. Not-for-profits are allowed to go and bring debris to them. Well, when a not-for-profit goes and buys a copier, the best buy doesn't say, oh, you can have it for free. So when there's, when you have a cost, that's an operating cost for either a profit-making company, a public organization, or a not-for-profit, that, those costs should be borne by that organization. And that's simply the way I feel. Now, the other thing here is that the current structure is, is that we have a free system that you ask for a card, a sticker for your car, you present your license and verify that you live where you say you live, and then they give you a sticker. If I came and said, well, I need another sticker, I could. And I have a son that lives in Colchester, I could say, hey, Rob, we don't have, I feel very strongly that unless you have a component of it that identifies the vehicle that it's on, there's no sense of having any sticker system. There really isn't, okay? Because it's subject to abuse. There is, I've heard, and again, I'm new to the community, I've only lived here about a year and a half, but I understand that there's a lot of concerned citizens that believe that this transfer station is being used from, by residents outside the area. I can't say whether it is or whether it isn't, but given the lack of controls that exist, I would believe that it is. Okay, I would, in fact, I would find it almost, it would be illogical to think that it isn't happening. So I believe that that's happening there, and it's probably happening, it's probably impacting our bulky waste area the most. I asked a question at one of the meetings, and I said, I challenged all the people, and Vincent, you probably remember this, I said, we probably have 40 or 50 contractors in this community. And I said, now, if any of you believe that those contractors have never taken a job outside of East Hampton, please raise your hand. That's a ridiculous thing, all right? So, again, we have to, we have to provide controls in there, so that, so that, we have to have adequate controls of this area. By not having controls, you land up with a result like minus 52,000. So I...
So is that something that, so, in your analysis there, again... So is that something that, so, in your analysis there, again, we're going to get it, is that something that we can implement?
Absolutely, okay? What it would take to do that is, there needs to be.
Thank you, Dan.
There needs to be an alignment. You need to change the way people use the transfer station, so that you would, Beth had recommended that we have a gate, a structure that limits the access going to the, going to the top. We want to force people to go over the scale. Person that's manning the scale can simply look in the vehicle, say to the person, what do you have? Well, most of the things up there are for freight, we don't charge anything for it. You can put metal there, you know, we actually make money on metal, okay? Brush and so forth, there's cardboard up there, there's non, there's recyclables, but that bulky waste area gets used. Right now, the numbers say that, if you take the last year, you see that it's 850, 850 tons. Based upon that, if you charge for everything, you'd land up with $85,000. We landed up with $21,000, or $20,000. Based on the numbers, we're only capturing 21% of the monies that we should be getting, are we getting, and the other 79% is being put there at no cost. Perhaps some of it legitimately, and perhaps not legitimately. I don't have an answer on that mix. All I know is, that's what's happening. So you need to control it. So how do you control it? You don't let people up in there indiscriminately, you have them interface with a transfer station employee, you go up, he takes a look at it, and maybe when you, as you go through this change, maybe he has to take a more careful look. People have said to me, oh, well, they put cardboard on top of the stuff to hide it. Well, maybe in the first month of this, the guy has to get out of the thing and just take a quick look, if he believes that that's going to happen. We're not, you know, we have to change the operation, otherwise, you're going to live with, you can see what's happening. It's getting more and more and more abused by the year. And it's going to be up for, you make policies to do that. So block the access, get some type of gate, they do make gates that open one way, okay? So at trying to get in, it's not going to open, trying to get out, it automatically opens, you leave. You've seen those before, I mean, you know, this is not rocket science. Is there a cost associated with it? Absolutely, okay? I don't know what that cost is, because you have to accept the plan first to go and do that. That would be one, you know, that would be the recommendation that I would have on how to fix that. So first, so you have two things, one is you need to implement the card system, a sticker system, to make sure that the people actually live in East Haddam, they're bringing stuff there. The author, also thing is that there was a, Portland used a one-sentence thing, it was an authorization form for contractors, because we're not saying that contractors can't use it, all right? But what it does say is, if they're doing some work on my house, as Bob Marsh goes and says that John Doe is allowed to go and bring stuff to my place, because he's working in my house. And so that verifies that the garbage, the bulky waste is coming from my house, from an East Haddam resident, and has every right to go there. And then there's the charges, is, so, you know, we have, so we have two areas. Couple of these policies are, you know, you're allowing the use of this, but then the numbers are meant to show you what the impact, what the impact of that, those decisions are. So I would suggest you change them, you allocate costs the way they're supposed to be allocated, and I think you'll be able to solve it. Because you do, you could do this tomorrow.
Bob?
Yes?
In your discussions with Don.
Yes.
Vincent up there, that's the manager of the facility. Was there any indication that additional employees would be needed?
All right. You know, the big, during our first meeting, during our first meeting, this is all dependent upon the volume that you're getting in there, and obviously, you know, the elephant in the room has to do with the carters and all that. Yet probably, and James, James Jansky was, has been a wonderful member, and really devoted a lot of time in thinking about this. And when, at our very first meeting, when we discussed this, they said, one of the possibilities here is a bag plan, and he immediately answered and said, I will not support a bag plan, and I will not participate in it, and I will no, I will no longer come to the dump, excuse me, the transfer station. I perhaps incorrectly said, that would be wonderful, because my focus is totally resident-focused, and it's totally about the reducing the cost. So perhaps that was, so he looked at me, we've since become quite good colleagues, okay? And, you know, we drove to the Essex station together and all that. Now, the reason for that is that, and the reason that he would say that, is that he understands that as a Carter, he's a private business, what does he care about? He cares about consistency, knowing what's going to happen in the future to his business. Well, yet, in the places that we visited that had either hybrid sticker plans, which would be like Essex, and a pure sticker system that, like Portland, there are some people, we're all different in this room. Some people say, I like to recycle, and other people say, I don't care. And that doesn't make one person good or one person bad, it just means that we're different. He knows that. So he knows that some people are going to resist using a sticker system, that are currently bringing their trash to the, to the, for the transfer station, and going to say, I'm just not doing this. I'm going to hire a Carter. And so what happens is the use of carters go up. But he likes that. And so as a result, it makes, it makes pure business sense for him to say, yeah, well, I'm not, I can't participate in that. And he felt strongly about some other issues having to do with, had to do with the abuse of this system, because he was obviously aware of it. And he's made some suggestions that we change the cost related to that area, because it's used principally by a limited number of people. So we addressed that, and we addressed the use of it for commercial waste. So we subsequently passed, it's not mentioned in this, because I had written this before we did that, that one, we wrote, it has five different parts of it, of a motion to recommend that these things be taken together.
So what I see, and I, again, you've done phenomenal work and very quantitative, so taking out some of the qualitative issues that people are always looking at. But we're going to have somebody working full-time at the Scale House.
Yes.
And we're going to, also, the proposal is that we'll be having someone running back and forth with the, using our truck to take the trash to Willimantic or Essex or wherever it goes to eventually.
Yes.
So that will mean there'll be one person available to, potentially, and a good portion of the time, one person to take care of all the rest of the duties. So that was my question.
If you implemented that change now, with the current volumes of trash that you have now, it would be very challenging.
Okay, but you feel.
However, I mean, complete the thought. Beth has said that under, within her department in Public Works, they have a number of people that have licenses to drive.
Right.
And that they may be able to augment that by that thing, certainly. Once the volume goes down as dramatically as it will go down, then I suspect that the use of that person might be limited. Currently, Portland has, which, I totally agree with the first selectman and his comments to me about this, that two people are inappropriate, even though their volumes, their, the pub, the number of people they have in Portland is slightly greater than ours. The reason I selected them is, A, they were sticker system, and they were almost the same population as us, so I thought it was a good comparison. So actually, what would happen is the, and I did not calculate this, when I'll be going over the total gross savings, I guess I can mention that now. It's that I did not include the savings that would be, that would come from the migration of people that bring stuff to the transfer station now to private dumpers. That will eventually happen, but since I couldn't quantify it, I didn't use it. So, you know, that, what would you have to do? You'll have to have, because there's not always, and the way the dump operates, the transfer station operates, rather, is that it, is that it tends to be more in spurts and so forth, okay? So to sit, put someone in there all the time may not be necessary, okay? But the point is, is that you'll need to go and limit access with that gate, so they have no choice there. And then I said, they have to go and talk to a person first, and whether they have to walk from one place to another is probably not asking them too much to do. Emmett, I spoke to the first selectman about it, he thought someone that would be used as combination in checking the incoming traffic to make sure that they had the correct sticker on their car, that they were, in fact, East, and that they had it, okay? That that could be used, they could be used in conjunction, and that's partially true. Okay? I would also envision that you probably change the flow, but again, that was beyond my, you know, my pay grade here. So, you know, and even when I was speaking to Donald yesterday, thinking that the flow might be, rather than going straight up, it's act, would first go into the upper area, that you would then deposit your recyclables and non-recyclables, that the whole mechanism that you have now perhaps would become obsolete, and that you would then design two things. What the other people use, I have a picture of it with me, first selectman has it as well. It's about a four and a half watt, foot wide opening each way. People run up to it, throw their stuff in, whether it's recyclables, non-recyclables, and they leave. Optimally, you'd put that on the same side, so that you don't have someone going from one side, and for non-recyclables and recyclables on the other. And my wife made a contribution to me, and it constantly reminds me, we have, I came from East Hampton, Long Island, and we had a town superintendent, whatever, what did they call, well, he was the fellow in charge, and then we had a town council with four other people there, so they had five to vote on things. And they redid. In the past, we had something that would cover you, so that when it rained, you could pull in, and you wouldn't get wet. And so he changed it, and he took that cover away. I don't think of him kindly anymore. So I, you know, it may be possible that when you make these changes, some of these things are not terribly costly, but something that you can do, because, you know, this is the, I wrote my report, especially the second one, and I think of myself as a resident of East Haddam, so.
So you're, I'm sorry to interrupt, your cost savings, you're saying, is around $300,000?
That's correct.
Okay.
Eventually.
Eventually.
Yeah.
But some of this is.
Not right away, but.
Well, some of this is right away.
Yep.
Yeah, the tipping fee reductions from haulers, I mean, this has been, you know, a contentious issue within the community. So, you know, my charge as a committee chair was, I wanted to bring everyone on board and to be able to go and vote unanimously for something, and.
And did you guys, did you vote unanimously?
We did.
You did.
Okay, but for a bag system. Now, clearly, you could go to a hybrid system, okay? But I, as a resident, if you, if you say, well, we're just going to get a sticker system, well, the sticker's going to cost, Haddam charges $50, there's others that charge $200, you pick a sticker system for $100, $125, like Essex, I would imagine the community's just going to go and say, this is a tax. And if they said that, I would be hard-pressed to go and not.
Argue with them.
Argue with them.
Right.
On the other hand, a, something that, you know, a bag system really does something quite differently, especially when you're able to tell your, everyone, every single person in East Haddam, I mean, we have about 3,600 residences, I believe, structures here. I'm trying to get my hands on how many it actually is. I went to the grand list, that said 4,200, the finance says 3,600, so whatever number that is. But this approaches 100 bucks a year savings.
So Bob.
Yeah.
We're going to be running up against time here.
Yeah.
Sure, Emmett was going to tell you that in a minute, but.
It's coming.
I was like, ready to go.
But you'll have the final report for us at our first meeting in April, then?
Yes. I'm going to bring it, and we have a meeting on the 29th, I'll submit it to them, and I'll perhaps send it to an email, you know, I just finished it last night.
True.
Thank you, Bob. You know, we've got a lot to look at here.
Yeah.
And it's very different from anything we've ever seen before.
Yeah, no, you did a great job.
For us.
If I work any more on this, then I'll be needing a new place to stay, because my wife has already told me that I would do, to change my residence.
Give you something to do, right?
Does the, does the town have like a list of alternate residences?
Yeah. Emmett's house.
Not anything quite like that.
Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome.
Did I do with that? I have to replace my shared services. Thank you. Shared services, I'll be very brief on that. Most of the past month has been dedicated to getting into this building, getting settled in, been a lot of effort placed on that. If you take a quick look down, you can see the Board of Ed has been busy, they're staying ahead of their issues, not letting things accumulate or become a problem. In the town of East Haddam, the installing programmable thermostats, hopefully, it's going to be less of an issue. But I made it a policy to stop places like the Grange and take a look at what's going on. I'm forever finding the thermostat set high, place is quite warm and comfortable, and there's nobody going to be in it for another 24 hours, and you set it back down again. These are going to be programmable, and we're going to save quite a bit, I think, there by not heating buildings when we don't need to. If you go over debt issuance under finance, it's particularly interesting, we went out for short-term, which is what we use, until we finally resolve our bonding needs and go out for a long-term bond. We issued a 19.4 million, net cost was 1.56% for six months, that's an extremely good rate. And what's particularly interesting there is the comments we were getting back from the vendors who were looking into it. After reviewing our financial policies and what we had done and how we were handling the town, they were incredibly complimentary. They came back saying, you guys really are doing it right, you're well-organized, you're on top of what you're doing, and very impressive responses from them. That's pretty much what I have from there, there's other bits and pieces you can look into if you like. The library situation, East Haddam free library, the probate court now has a petition to transfer the library to the town in their possession. It's anticipated that they will be responding in a positive way, and eventually, we're going to be going to a town meeting, perhaps a referendum, to decide whether or not we're going to take that over. But that's finally moving, it's taken quite a while to get it going, it is in process. That's all I have. Citizens' concerns, to be, give you a choice.
Jim Rowe, I've been on for an assus. I have two issues related, I have some literature from each of us, like, I wasn't able to make that last meeting during the storm, and this was on the agenda, the agreement with the Annuals Association on the career staff responding immediately on the first phone. The second one is my letter to Chief, Chief of Allo, two years ago, requesting exactly what is now in effect. And you can see, up until the other day, there's been no movement on that. So the career staff in East Haddam has requested to respond immediately in an annulance for years, and now it finally has come to light when somebody else wants to take credit for it. And in the original, or the new agreement, this was the paragraph we were looking for. You'll see at the beginning about us calling into Valley Shore, when we come on duty and go off to be to track our time. We all punch a time clock, nobody in town seemed to know that. So forever, we punch the time clock when we come in and go home, people are going to say we've been fudging our hours. I don't find that appropriate. Secondly. Secondly, I want to talk about what's happening to the career staff. I don't know, I got a little bit from Mr. Smith about going to two full-timers. In the last three weeks, I've got a lot of rumors. Apparently, all of us are going to get fired. And volunteer fire chief and the volunteer ambulance chief are going to write themselves positions full-time. Now, I have also for you, this was the last job description that was posted.
Thank you.
Second is an article from the Norwich Bulletin about Basra going to full-time, hiring career staff and being volunteers and how it violates the FLSA. So if indeed the volunteers become paid guys, then they can all be volunteers, unless they write something possibly salary-wise position. So I don't know the details. We have a meeting on Tuesday with the fire commissioners, fire chief, ambulance chief. I really wish more than one Selectman could be there. But I feel we're under attack, and I don't like the direction we're heading in public safety. And I'd like to get some support from somebody. This isn't about me. It's about me having this job. It'll make a lot of money. But we're going to go from five career firefighters who were hard time for the town. Me with 27 years, another with 20, 18. So I don't know what we're going to do. I can't get my voice heard, and I don't, can't meet in private. So by saying it here, I hope the community hears about it. I know they're voting about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that meeting, so that meeting on Tuesday is to hear what the part-timers have to say, correct? I mean, is that, that was the setup?
We, we need to have an open discussion about where we're going. That's what we're after. Now, if the Selectman wished to attend, we'll have to post it as a meeting and open it to the public. So we're quorum, the minutes, a couple of us together.
When is the meeting?
What is that, Tuesday?
Eight AM.
Tuesday, eight AM.
Tuesday, eight AM.
Well, you'd have to know that ahead of time.
Yes, we would have to know that.
I mean, I'd be someone.
I'm already too, too late to post a Board of Selectmen meeting because I would have to post it at 8:00 AM, by 8:00 AM Monday morning, and we're not open until nine.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be required to post it as a meeting because it's a meeting of a different board. If you chose to try to take action or something, then you'd be violating the law. But if you're just attending another board, that's perfectly acceptable.
Just listen and not speak.
Board of Fire Commissioners didn't post it either, so, so that would be a problem because it wasn't, it wasn't Board of Fire Commissioners. All they are weren't coming. So nobody has posted a meeting for Tuesday morning at 8:00.
So there may not be a meeting then?
No, well, no, there was a meeting, but there wasn't a quorum of any group. It was, you weren't bringing all the Board of Fire Commissioners in, right?
About the ambulance board.
Yeah.
The ambulance board's not ours. I mean, we don't have to post an ambulance board meeting.
I thought there were ambulance people going to.
But they're not a, a town agent, a town board. It was just going to be you, fire chief, the ambulance chief, and, and I believe the part-time staff, correct? I mean, and I don't know who from the Board of Fire Commissioners was going, but it could only be one.
It's a separate meeting.
So what you're saying, it was a staff meeting, so it doesn't have to, not have any.
Right, it's not, it wasn't a board meeting.
But we can't go to the staff meeting because then we have.
Then it would become a board.
Okay, Randy, you had a comment?
Yes, I'd like to comment a little bit on the transfer station. It's clear that it's love work.
It's been a lot of effort.
Having served on three transfer stations for, I see some things in here that, that really concern me, and I feel there's going to be a lot of pushback from town residents. I see a lot of unintended consequences coming out of this. I mean, you've heard some of this before. People have to pay for bags. It's another tax. Whether you charge for stickers or bags, it's going to be considered another tax. We knew before when you had to pay for TVs and electronics, go to the transfer station, people were tossing them on the side. I live on BB Road, it's a scenic road, and it's a perfect place for doing that because there aren't many residents and you don't get seen doing it. But see, the same thing's going to happen with that. You're just going to toss the trash on the side of the road. There's also the problem with recyclables. You're going to put it in a bag that's called recyclable, but it's going to be trash that's going to go in there. Talk to Don about this, because he knew that's going to happen.
Question that I've raised.
One of the things that we ask for, recommendations for or past, is you've got to give the employees more authority up there. Here is no education. I have to ask, I've been on three committees, and I still have to ask, "Is this recyclable or isn't?" And sometimes they don't know. It used to be that the papers that you run through.
Credit paper.
Should go in recyclable. Now I, no, it shouldn't go in there. Nobody said that. I just happened to find out because I asked them. There's no posters up there telling what's recyclable.
That's part of the program.
If you want to improve recyclable, you've got to educate the public. They need to know. Some people never recycle because they just don't believe in it. But without education, it isn't going to change. I hear a lot of expenses here, more employees. You're going to have to be more employees to run trucks. You can't have one guy enforcing the recyclable part and having somebody in the weigh station, somebody drive, there are more employees. Expense of the trucks, the containers and all of that. I see great business here for the haulers. Yes, they like to see bags, and more people are going to pay for the hauler. But it isn't going to work for everybody. So, and I don't mean to demean the report. Clearly, they've done a lot of work, but there's, there's a lot more to this. And I'm just warning you, there's going to be tremendous pushback.
I, I expect that. Change often has pushback. It's not, yes, most of what you're referencing has been thought about, and we do have to deal with it. We will.
And plus, and the last thing is, there has been no discussion in the committee that there needs to be changes in the ordinances. Not just the ordinance that I proposed about, you know, covering your load on the way to the transfer station, but the actual operation of the transfer station. Those ordinances, that language of the ordinances.
They, and that will come to town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Just one comment. In a recent discussion two days ago with a DEP, DEP official, mentioned that the cost of MSW is going from 60 and expected that it would approach over $100. If you don't make some move with regard to this issue, your cost will absolutely explode. And, and so it's, you know, it's have to, obviously, in the report, there are options on what you can do or what you can't do. I'll tell you one thing that you can't do, status quo. That, expect that your residents will be paying an ever-increasing amount of money. Just understand that that's the consequence.
We're getting in the way of Board of Finance meetings. We have to move forward quickly on this now.
One question. Lynn Woodward, 51 Oriole Road. I am also on the ambulance board of directors. I have a question. Emmett, is that Tuesday morning meeting open to the public?
It's a staff meeting, so I don't think it is.
It's a staff meeting, basically.
The question is whether you change it to a different kind of meeting.
Okay. As, as a member of the board of directors for the ambulance, I am requesting for one of us to be representative there.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Very quickly, the ordinance codification. On the 28th, we're going to have a town meeting to vote and hopefully approve that and get that knocked off. Horizontal curve, nothing further on that. The new business, there are no Board of Commission changes. There are no tax refunds. And once again, public comment very quickly. Anything further? Selectmen's discussion, I don't have anything. Do either of you?
No, just for the next meeting, I'd like to have a, see if we can have a little bit more information on the horizontal curve safety project.
Yeah, I, I need to get in touch with them and say, "When is this going to get wrapped up?" I do know they've made a few changes over the winter, but I suspect they're kind of busy right now keeping things, or sorting things out from all the storms. Anything else, Sue? That said, I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
And all favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are done.
Second, is that you, or Sue?
Yes.